Actually called the April 12, 2021 Westport Town Council meeting to order. And I want to welcome everybody here this evening and also want to welcome those that are joining us on the internet. And what we normally do for those of people not here, we will have a license to apply and start everything off.
Let me just do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready, the first thing we have on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the March 8, 2021 council meeting. And we send those meetings by email each of us and gives you a chance to read it. So do I have a motion? Oh wait, is there any addition or corrections to the minutes?
Make the motion, we accept the minutes sent to us.
Second that on favor, aye. Okay, the next thing is approval of funeral deeds, payroll vouchers, adjustment and monthly bills. Do I have a motion? We accept those.
I make the motion, we accept them as printed out.
Second those on favor, aye. Okay, Westport Water Project.
My name's Alston, I'm with Commonwealth Engineers. I first wanted to introduce everyone as to Teresa, Chris Hartwick. Teresa, unfortunately Melanie is leaving us, she's found a an eight to five job that's better suited to her business first schedule, so sad to see her go. But Teresa's our Director of Business Development and she's just going to take over, she's the expert at the grants programs. And since we have that wastewater project coming up, she would assume that that through the way. So there's Teresa, she'll serve in that role and feel free to contact her if you have any questions or concerns. Moving forward, water project, we're in pretty good shape. On the Division A, the new water treatment plant, we should have an update passed out, there's some pictures. But the work's proceeding pretty well, Mason Rework on the water plant is in process, there's some others attached for you. And we're on schedule for project. We also are currently projecting to be under budget, so we're in the process of coordinating for use of those remaining funds. On Division B, which is the water maintenance project, we did get that change order processed and merit, so we pipe delivery before they can start on additional work area. My understanding is they put it in town today and they will be in town later this week. And then of course our additional pipe issue, few results here shortly, water project. We have a construction meeting scheduled for tomorrow. Fortunately, I was live on Wednesday and Rachel was getting a COVID shot, so she was concerned that she may get sick Wednesday, so she changed to Tuesday. I'll be here, construction meeting after that. Rachel will be here to bully the contractors on my behalf, get them all working towards the end goal of finishing the projects. That said, are there any questions on your water projects, any questions or concerns we can address at this time?
If anybody has any questions, feel free to ask.
I was just wondering, when this is finished in town, the street part, they'll come back and repair the?
Everything, everything gets repaired, it's a little better condition.
Okay.
So a lot of times they'll be separate.
And it'll take a while for that to happen, where they put in your meters and have to cut your drives out.
Most likely, most likely that, you know, you'll see after a few rains, so that you'll have a construction, a substantial completion, you'll keep retainage. And so we withhold months for that type of repair work. And you also have a full month warranty, so if that comes up, just to clarify for the issues.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions on the water project?
There is a change order or the possibility of full month or anything?
If you haven't already processed the change order, my understanding is that there was some type of record applied it, but I don't know if it was addressed or not officially at the meeting. So to get those items out of the way and make sure that they're put on the record, we have a couple administrative items, one is the change order, change over B2, this is the water long shot and top lip that we did for change stuff. So if we could get efficient motion and second approval into the minutes, we should process that.
Okay.
Okay. Draw down the water. West, something else to talk about. Would you see some of that, some of the travel on the road?
Right, now it says the one that goes right down, popper around the middle of the street. I didn't hear about this, but I didn't.
Here you'll need to sign, but you guys will just need the next motion to go.
And it was for the reason behind, we'll be sharing.
Their existing conditions will be estimated that didn't allow us to perform limited repairs.
I make the motion to accept this change order.
I will second that on favor, aye.
As far as the payment applications, you addressed that here as well already?
Yeah.
I need two payment applications were submitted, one for payment construction, who's doing the wastewater treatment, water treatment plant. That's payment application number five, the amount of $161,936.50. And a corresponding 5% payment to the retainage account of $8,523.50. And ask at this time, council make motion to approve those.
We've already seen these, right?
It's the request right here.
Okay.
Here you'll have to sign all this.
I make the motion that we go ahead and send it back.
I'll second that on favor, aye.
There was another payment application from David Merrick, it's application number three. At this time, the engineer's not making a recommendation for payment, it's efficient. You passions, so let them know that it's a decent additions before we consider it. There's also voices that were sent from the engineer. Discuss that here.
No.
Sure, and all of these items are the contractual amounts already approved on projects, additional costs. That said, anything else on the water plan, any questions, otherwise I'll move on to the wastewater.
I have this now.
Yeah, this is a, the engineer amendment, this is for change order, for David Merrick change order, there's going to be an increase in the contraction timeframe. And so we assembled the corresponding increase in our construction costs because our construction costs are kind of something from that. So here we're asking for an adjustment from those costs of $4,000.
He needs to sign all of these. And that's all of this?
Yes.
I make the motion, go ahead, take care of that.
I will second.
It's where they had to pay a little extra to.
No, that's actually the engineer amendment for.
The engineer in.
For an additional $4,000.
Okay.
To the, to the engineer for on the water project?
Yes, sir.
I will second that motion on favor, aye.
We appreciate that, those have all been pre-approved by the state agency. I'm afraid to ask a question.
I don't have any more.
On your wastewater project, everything is, thankfully, Melanie has worked tirelessly to get that in. So it was submitted and then it was kicked back, then it was submitted, stopped this time. So we're being considered for financing. Very encouraged because of the infrastructure. Position to be the recipient of this. We need to see the outcome is, we're able to commit.
It would just be, I feel like personally, it would be super nice to have good water, a good way to get rid of bad water. You know, you beat a dead horse when you're not fixing both problems.
You're absolutely right, but it's a, it was hard to fill the swamp.
It's very hard, very hard.
Well, that is your water wastewater projects, if any questions, comments, concerns I can address.
You guys don't have state, don't want to. That's a long way to drive. There's no questions, nobody has questions.
Amen or you? I'm you, aye. Okay.
Thank you, good to see you. Thanks for coming up. He's done or first step? Which, never mind, I'll read.
What we could do, Lori, and if you have anything on the ADA's line that's non, okay, non because of work duties, unable to be with the student thing.
I can talk about these on the policy and the engineer.
Yes, please.
The, I did, I was found a procedure of the year from 2002, so we did have some stuff that I finally found and I was researching this, but basically this is knowing instructions to tell the clerk how to handle utility bills. I didn't know, but do they just hope to approve this procedure, is it just a policy procedure?
I'm sorry, I was, I didn't catch you here, what did you say?
This is our billing, utility billing procedures for the water company office basically. It just describes like what a bill is, what we describe to the customer, what this connection means. Just kind of that nitty gritty legal terminology in case we ever questioned. This is more of a guideline that's expected of us from the state. They want us to have some type of procedure or input place, that way when we're audited for our water audits, we can say yes, we have exact instructions, it says our due date is the 20th of the month. It tells us when we file our compliance, it tells us the procedure for how to do it, all of that stuff. That's what that.
I make the motion that we adopt this ordinance. Did you understand?
No, it's not an ordinance.
Or, um, policy.
Did I need to read this?
I think you've already read it, I think when we put this all together and when we had people that was one thing that was terrible because they got shut off after the due date, you know, I mean, it was only done for, that's the way we're supposed to do it. Not that you're, anybody's being mean to someone, we just, that's a weird mess. But anyway, I, we should go ahead and.
I will second that on favor, aye.
Jen, I have the outline, people were here. First one is ordinance number 2021-3. And if they can a public way, do we have a public hearing or?
Yep, public hearing. So anybody that wants to be able to speak on it, it's allowed to speak on it.
First one we have tonight on ordinance number 2021-3. Don't believe in these.
Just open up for the.
Oh, okay. This is now ordinance for vacating public way and alley is open for discussion. And the following public way that they want to be closed is alley that runs east to west, North Elizabeth Street, ending at the alley that runs north to south, from West Main Street to West Mulberry Street and then Westport Indiana. Is there any public comment on that?
It was the petition, uh, petition for. They would have ability to see first.
It's Roger and Melissa Devon, Jennifer Fowler.
She's here.
Ryan Lowman, and then Robert Hall.
That's all the property.
So one of you want to speak first?
I'd like to write the petition. The way for purpose of property eight years ago, it's been up in the gravel way, it's never been used as an alley. It runs between, you know, a few different property owners, it's never been used for alley. We researched back fifty years, never been used as an alley. They shouldn't have it closed because there's just no reason for it to be as an access for anyone, it's not needed. We've always just noted and taken care of it as if it was, you know.
Okay. Okay. Did you want to say anything to them?
I'm all for it.
Okay.
Oh, you're all for it, okay.
Oh, okay.
Is there anyone that's opposed to this? Lori?
I make the motion that we go ahead and close the alley, no one even knows it's there. I have one, I had one of those.
Yes, okay, I will second that on favor, aye.
As long as the minutes reflect that he was present and had no objection, that's okay.
Okay. What's that is?
The second one is. On this one, we did not get Monica Hudson's agreement, but we know that Damon that she is the approval side going for that first one.
I think you can, you can approve it subject to getting confirmation. And the only reason I mentioned that is she's the owner of record, so I don't have any reason to disbelieve Damon, but I think you can go ahead and approve it today and make it subject to her signing.
Right.
Additional her signature.
I think we could just get, even if you just sign that petition along with Damon and the other owner, I think that would be sufficient.
And there was no objection to that, I make the motion.
Did you open up a public hearing?
Yes, we didn't really open up a public hearing on this, I guess. It was sort of like, okay, we're opening up a public hearing on ordinance number 2021-4. The closing of the alleyway, the public way alley running east to west, north parcel sixteen dash eighteen dash one dash one hundred and ten dash thirteen point zero 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 dash zero one four and sixteen dash seventeen dash six dash two hundred and twenty dash eighty seven point zero 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 dash zero one four and south parcel sixteen dash eighteen dash zero one dash one hundred and ten dash zero zero nine point zero zero dash zero one four and sixteen dash seventeen dash zero six dash twenty twenty dash eighty six point zero 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 dash zero one four, starting at the alleyway west and southwest street and ending at the alley east of Williamson Street. Also, the public way alley running south to north, beginning at East Race Street and ending at the creek. East of parcel sixteen dash eighteen dash one, that's one hundred and ten dash thirteen point zero 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 dash fourteen and sixteen dash eighteen dash one, that's one hundred and ten dash nine point zero zero dash zero one four and west of parcels sixteen dash seventeen dash zero six dash two hundred and twenty dash eighty seven point zero 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 dash zero one four and sixteen dash seventeen dash zero six dash twenty twenty dash eighty six that point zero 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 dash zero one four. More specifically depicted on exhibit A.
That is the best, I don't think they're not right, that's like good on the good day, showing where that is.
Right.
So, so it's in the middle between, on Race Street, you run right down right to the range and then the on that cross and then this street going this way, I guess that is an alley too, so you're going to ship. Right, it's not ever been used.
No, I am all for the.
Right, right.
Besides that, the one alley at my house is actually sitting.
I make the motion that, I make the motion that we accept this on, do I hear any body opposed? Right.
Well, my call would be then to make a motion to go ahead and prove it on first reading.
Okay. I make the motion on the first reading, we prove it.
I'll second, second that motion on favor.
I'm making it more work for you guys.
That's okay. Now you're going to make a motion to prove.
I will make the, the motion that we prove the ordinance.
I'll second that on favor, aye. And then community and billing.
Can we go back?
Yes.
And retrospect, go ahead and approve the last one in the first reading as well, as for the record.
Okay. That's all right. I make the motion that we approve both of the alley closings that was brought up this week.
I will second that on favor, aye.
Thank you.
Well, that is subject to, second was subject to.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, community and billing, I would apologize, you were second on that, skip real quick, but you're up.
I hear Kenny Marshall, Vice President of the Westport here, the community building.
Hi, Jane.
And we are here to require some assistance from the town. Building here, so. A lot of repairs on it. Think over the past thirty four years. They maintain or just repair the necessary items. There's a page there, and there's a handout there of the needed items that's here and the interior. I guess what our wishes would be to possibly get some assistance, monetary assistance from the town. May have enough money to get some kind of grant. I have some grants. I think years ago, we started talking about this, I'm not sure the town was able to then or coming to a grant, and maybe else. I guess that's kind of what we discussed, there's four or five of us, four members here tonight. So anybody wants to interject, ready? Jane, would you like to explain some of the repairs?
Sure.
The second page. Ordinance updated, you know, the first question, why I made earlier.
Okay, thank you.
I've never changed, that's okay. Then on to the next page. People that are certainly always have to walk through. Walked around the outside of the building and listed things that in our minds have been concerns for a few years and actually aren't able to do anything about it financially. This girl's our treasure and she has included a financial report in your packet. You can talk with other things, but now we're at the point for those thirty four years old to have major things. Fortunately, there's some water damage behind the rock. Because there's some crumbling of the walls in the apartment. It's crumbling of the floor, so it's either foul water in or true damage. Some of that in the back room and trying to make sure repair on that back wall. Didn't have enough money to do that to the entire room. So anyway, in order to fix those problems, we moved the rock and the white siding and replaced with metal siding or something durable. Old windows made replaced and fortunately, it's not, there's not a lot of windows, but they all are needing and needed again. All the doors for the exterior, except for the front two doors being replaced and to bring them up to the lights and then of course, the other reductions. That's the thing through the outside, the interior has some ceiling falling, it's just that it's not falling yet, but it's released from the ceiling and it's, you know, it's a close. Same thing in the hallway that goes out from the kitchen to the restrooms. Drywall problems, so that would, that would require probably replacement of the ceiling. And then the next whole point, actually the ramp. A crumbling floor in the northeast corner of a small meeting room would have to be, to be, obviously cement work done and then a new floor. The meeting room needs the rest of that room handling removed, updated, some sort of durable wall covering and new lighting and seating. As you go down the list, the price of these are less, but definitely things that need to be done. And as you get down to the bottom, one of the things that we would love to be able to do is to put an ADA compliant entrance. It's like playground is, to a catwalk. Get rid of the steps on the side of the building so that there were no steps to get into the. Had restaurants, because really don't have enough restaurants in that building, with the building. And then the last thing, if we were to do that out, is to close off the restaurant in the front. Close off that entrances to the restaurant in that big room and make those entrances from the hallway. So that big meeting room with the balcony running to the restrooms from the big room. And, and then if, you know, there's other things that we didn't even list that, you know, plus. We tried to set priorities and things that we've been thinking about and talking about.
Okay, well Jane, that's, Kenny appreciate this, because when I met with you before, the town council had no idea what was going on down there. That's been very massive on our part because now we're trying to coordinate all things together and get us all on the same page moving forward. So I'd really appreciate the, letting me come before the board and talk then, thank you Jane. And we definitely, because this is an asset to the community and we definitely want to keep it up and don't want to lose it for where we get to the point of so much disrepair, we have replaced the whole building, so I what, Dana, what do you think on this? Is this, you guys want to get in? Jane, what do you think on this? Is this, you guys want to get an estimate on what this would cost or?
This is how you have to do it, you first have to get an architect. Before we can and show them your papers, what you need. We'll have to do this, but because that building belongs to this town, we are responsible for it, not just you. So we'll help you with this and I know that uh somebody has, Jane, you have talked with with the girl that helps with the grants. And she, you know, at the time, we were having such a big issue with the water here. And water is our most necessary thing that we have to do first. So now that we've got that on the right way. Now we need to address this building that belongs to this town, this town loves that building and and we want to preserve it. So we will help you all we can. And I don't, have you talked to her lately, Mary? Well, and Mary has give that over to Jody, hasn't she, Jody Cromer? Uh so that's what they have to do first is we have to get a hold of Jody, get an architect to and let them see what you want repaired and they will give us an estimate. Then the the grant, that's what we will write the grant for.
Also, Joyce, um one of the reasons I asked. I complicated part of that um was that we. The announcements for the COVID grants have come out and.
Right.
Westport alone was bringing in three hundred thousand dollars. And I feel like the community building is maybe a couple of something that we don't.
I agree wholly.
So I suggest that they put some of this good timing with us coming in all the money and everything.
One way or another, we will keep working on on getting that building put back to par.
We realize that just to do the necessary thing can take a pretty good job.
Oh, yes, yeah, absolutely.
And I think we'd be better to try to get the grant. Maybe get enough money to.
Yes. Absolutely.
We're going back to what you said, that we, the Westport gets a three hundred thousand grant, that's that's fixed.
Yes, we have until twenty twenty three suspended. Um we have to create an ordinance that defines how we're going to spend three hundred thousand dollars. Um I'm getting ready to go to a training today that will explain even more about how we do paperwork side of it. But it's my understanding, um things that qualify, if anything, that has to do with infrastructure within your town, which would include the building. Um it can, it would include things like essential workers' payrolls. It includes water and wastewater facilities, if we need to put money towards that stuff too, of course. But because we already have some things in progress with that. I feel like um community building think that it has been outreach. Um they provided um COVID testing during the pandemic last year. Things like that automatically qualifies into that category. And so far, the guidelines are pretty vague of what we have to spend the money on, but the goal of the money is to go back into the community. And help our economic uh development because of the lack of funding during COVID. So my understanding is we have a lot of flexibility there, the main thing is we have to pre-plan. Figure out how we're going to spend that money and then we have to write an ordinance and approve that with the council to be able to.
So. We're saying in pre-planning that we're going to help the community building, bring it up to the standards that needs to be said to, so when Scott's gonna have to write an ordinance.
No.
Oh, it doesn't?
Just.
It's just my understanding, but if you go to a training, you'll have a better, you'll have a better idea, but if no one's written one of the ordinance. Or write up. But um my understanding is that it's.
I think that we get initially half of the money. They said within ninety days, so I'm thinking by May, we're gonna get the hundred fifty thousand. Um. Um hopefully have more information, maybe with our next map, to how we're figuring it out, but I think that three hundred thousand is a very good start to be able to support.
Well. We're thinking on down the line, where this is leading to. Whether it be our responsibility. To. Get somebody to give us a cost estimate or whether it be the community building people.
I think, I think it'd be a team effort. And I think Jody will be here tomorrow for the construction meeting, so I will ask her some more about it.
Okay.
Cause I'm wondering if there's, like for the water, we got funded, we got like a thirty thousand dollar grant for preliminary engineering. And they came out and they designed everything in a water plant. So I'm thinking we can get some kind of preliminary grant hopefully to help get it started since we don't know.
There were several architects that came when I was thinking about the bank building. And they didn't cost us anything.
Yeah, we had an architect uh a year ago, so. Just to get an estimate of what it serves.
Right.
At the time, I think it was over ten, twelve thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, certainly.
But it seems like that's the first step, otherwise.
That is the first step, but you you don't, they don't actually, you don't actually pay them until you get your grant. So these architects know that. So it's, yeah, it's not something you have to have upfront.
We could possibly get an architect name from from you guys.
I think Jody would probably have P P L to ask about that. But you can pick them, once they bid the job, then you can pick which one you want. And they'll they'll actually give you pictures of what they designed for you and what actually they're gonna do.
Part direction to us, then we should go ahead and start researching.
Whatever you need to research, but I would wait till Jody give us to go ahead or. I don't know, what do you, Jody will tell us what to do.
You'll have it a few different ways. Depending on how big you want to make the project, if you want it to be huge, you can start with Jody and ask about preliminary funding. Be able to have someone create the plan. If you want to just do some of these simple repairs yourself, I mean, a lot of, I know like Damon, you can go to someone like Damon that's out working construction and stuff and he'd say, this is how much for this, this is how much for windows. And you can go about it that way too, just get estimates from local people, local companies that you would trust to come in and repair it. So I mean, you can take it for a little bit of correction, you can go really big with it. Or you can piece it out and say, okay, number one on the list, we want um what was it here? The removal of the rock, the re-siding, and then you could go, we don't want to re-side, we're gonna have.
I think that you.
Yeah.
I think what I would do for, and this is just me on what I was thinking when I was gonna do this. Uh I would ask Jody, what do I do now? And she'll say, okay, get an architect, I will take whatever it is you want fixed here and I'll I'll find you the people that can fix it. And it could be such a thing as finding one person that would do it all. And then you wouldn't have to do all this little. Right.
A lot of repairs we haven't done. Yet is because to open our budget, you know. Spend any of that and then it puts us way down the list for any kind of grant that we can match.
I understand.
I think we would probably just the thing to do is.
Right, I I think so too.
And and the reason why I planned that discussion is we want to get started on as soon as since we can and not, you know, delay it. But because we know we're going to get money, we know we're going to get a second of that, that's not part of it.
Well, I think maybe you better wait until you get. Uh a grant and then see what the match is, I mean, it could be way yonder. It could be way up yonder. Just like that, we had, we could get four hundred thousand, but I had to match it with two hundred thousand. So seeing, that's what you gotta do is see how much it's going to cost. Exactly.
Money back for operating.
Hey, other questions on that, I mean, this is, this is starting. Getting on, like, I hadn't thought about that, what uh Joyce said, but yeah. If it was bigger in scope and we get it this much, we gotta match it this much, then we could use the COVID funds to do the match for that. And do a couple.
I also know, I talked to Marshall former and she said that you could apply for a rural development loan, they're at three percent. And that would be a matching situation where we would pay so much. And then you would, you would have a three percent loan for forty years. And so that would also be something to consider, if we don't come into, if we create this, say a three million dollar building project.
I don't think so, but but I, yeah, yeah.
This big project, if you just want to take out a loan and pay a certain amount of it for a year, that's a more affordable option than.
I suggest that we have a meeting of the the community builders with Jody and all of them, so she can explain all this, what we need to do. But uh it it makes more more sense to start that way, to me. To me, you need. Right, well, we can do it here or or she'll see Jody tomorrow. Have her to set up one or she'll send us an email. Evening.
And I appreciate that all of you coming this evening and. Get Paul rolling on this, it's doable, but you know, it's hard working together type of thing. So anytime, you're welcome to come down to town council meeting and say, this is how things are going, or this is how what our needs are. Kind of keep in touch. All right, that's good.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next thing we have is abandoned properties, barrier to comply on seven oh seven East North Street. And six oh two North Beer Run. You can stay or leave if you want.
Oh, I was pleased because we're starting to get complaints, I've gotten some complaints from the community, uh some phone messages, different concerns. And the reason I brought up those particular two properties was because those are two properties that last year they failed to comply. And we fined them and I put them in a package and they have yet to pay their taxes. And those means are still pending and because or residents are calling in this year complaining about those same two properties. So my question is, what can we do now? One of the seven oh sevens north appears to be abandoned. Uh doesn't look like there's anybody living in it, but I know um um last I talked to somebody that says empty. What are we supposed to do?
There you go. So. Yep. Oh, do you see that?
Obviously, you gotta have stable ability to now afford this. Fill out one for. Then I would, I can draft an order, but yeah, that would probably be right. You have to give them. You gotta give them an opportunity to be present.
Oh, this.
Yeah, and and we need to, if if we don't, Scott, and. We're gonna be sitting on quite a few properties.
Do these two start?
I I could say, you know. Does David need?
Yeah, I understand.
He would want to have the ability to. I'm fine, that's actually great. Um but that's where you start.
All right.
By going to that presenting it to the council, that's the decision, you have the council to take an order.
Now, what about, so we'll we'll come back to that, the the total one, the next thing that we're talking about anyway, but. The six oh two North Beer Run, uh he's added that he was not owing any money, he's not worth it. So that one still has an offsetment of the situation where it's the wrong lead, John, things like that. And.
Look, I step on that one, we'll be.
Small claims court. Yes, that's where this gentleman's gonna vote. Is that something we need to vote on as a town council?
I as as a town council, I normally don't, I I like to have that, that's approval to go ahead and report with the state kind of legal action that you filed. I have the council.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to spend money. You're gonna spend money on a legal piece and.
Exactly. I uh I'll make the motion that we do condemn that first one, let Damon start that process. Okay, and on the second one. The second one with no compliance whatsoever, we go ahead and take that to court.
Then we don't, we just need to vote.
You can vote and then I'll just get confirmation for it.
All in favor, I. With 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 this gentleman. And we've been over backwards with him, Scott. And providing dumpsters and. Every way and his, and matter of fact. What I did and and we've done on some things, we could have made the fine go higher, but I I. We stopped it to this certain point and he still. Refuses to do anything, so I don't see the other choice.
At this point, that's your only option.
All right. And the other ones.
So for accommodation, you may even have a public area, or how do you start that process back up?
That's what I'm saying, Damon, just when he thought the the form that you have provided, I think is a good starting point, so inspection needs to be done, why it needs to be. Why it falls inside the unsafe building, that ordinance, that would then presented to the council for them to then.
I have another one for you.
I I just noticed too, Scott, and we wanted you to see this too and how that looked, but.
I do too.
I do too. But looking around the properties here in town, it's, we're gonna be sitting on quite a few and we're gonna start getting on.
Well, the thing that bothers me the most, I think, I love this town and I hate to see somebody disregard everything. And so many of these LLCs or whatever you call them, come in here and they'll buy a house and then they'll sell it to somebody knowing that they're not gonna pay it off and get it back and resell it and get. That's what happened in the one over by the, that's what's happening to the one below me too. And now there's garbage in the yard, I don't know, Brian, we've talked about that. The whole garage is full of bagged trash. The back porch is bagged trash, the back, the furniture's all left in the house and and water has gotten up and it it just needs condemned now, there's no fixing it.
I think, one thing, and I'll make a short comment, when I got on the town council, looked at some of these properties and see who owns them. There's people in Texas, there's people in New Jersey. I mean, I I was.
Can't get a hold of them.
Can't get a hold of them and I was flabbergasted on the amount of property that's not owned by people that are even local around here. Or I was I was really surprised about that, but anyway, we'll start on that and then uh.
Can I just ask for clarification? So Damon needs to go and expect that he needs to present that to the council.
Yeah, and I don't think, I think I'm just, I don't think you have to approve it at a hearing, I think they can look at it and say this. You can set it for a hearing.
Okay.
So if they get it and it looks like it needs to be set for a hearing, based on what the information is. There's certain, at a certain extent, I think, statute, certain things that require a hearing, there's some things that don't.
Right.
Uh but then we have to give the owner notice, either way, either you have to comply or what you need to do. And if it's a certain situation where they're here, you gotta give them the opportunity to hear from here and get, you have the ability to hear, you have the ability to have a attorney, you have the ability to. Do the evidence, so you have to have all of that, to keep or take a record of it. Something that that the council will vote as to whether or not.
Scott, would that be, would that be in a formal letter that like to?
Yeah, I have a, I have a, I I have a form that we all get, Gloria, that we can do the.
Okay, that's that's what I wasn't clear about. Okay, okay, that's what, that's what I resonate rather. Clear about, okay, does that take care of Gloria, the one on six oh two North Beer Run, so. Okay, the last one on that is a total.
So it's basically the same thing, you can't do anything until Damon's got his inspections back there and then. And so we can send that letter potentially have a public grant by the next month. And so we can send that letter, potentially have a public hearing by the next month, or what?
Uh, next month might be, we can try it.
Well, if, if possible, I can, we'd like to start one next month.
And it doesn't have to be on, the hearing doesn't have to be during this time, it can be at a stop.
All right, we can set a special time to do that.
Yeah. It doesn't have to be during a council meeting, I've been, they want it at different times, but they could. You know, if you got somebody that's gonna have a bunch of people coming to the fire, have a lot of others to take.
Yeah, that's true, we wouldn't want a time council meeting with that.
Right, you may decide you don't wanna have it during a public.
That's probably the best way to do it. Uh, and that will be a public hearing, yes, aye?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have to announce it, and put it in paper. I'm sorry.
That's right.
So everybody knows, on the, on the, uh, the property being condemned, so there is a, there is criteria has to be to stop this. Oh, you're one of the programs, they have a whole list of.
It's pretty big, too, isn't it?
I just wonder about thinking that, you know, I just all put up there, it's, oh, your house.
Do you, if anybody wants to see what happens, what, you're welcome to come up here and look at that. Right, um, but this is, this just covers everything.
Okay, oh, I'll, I'll read this, Joe. Okay, and then lastly, before we open it up to the public, it's the Westport Police Department Monthly Report, March twenty twenty one. Arrests to arrest, two citations, three written warnings, eight verbal warnings, uh, one personal injury, one property damage. Well, I'll tell you what, I, I would have never believed this, out in front of my house, I was sitting there in the living room, and I heard this bang. And next thing I know, I see a car going, like that, and I thought, what in the world? And. Yeah, like it, woo, 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 but anyway, it almost hit my neighbor's porch, and you don't think of sitting inside your house and gonna get your porch hit.
Yeah.
But, uh, if it spun the other way, it would have got me, so it worked out, it spun in the ne- uh, neighbor, but it was that far away, but broad, broad daylight in the morning, uh, I won't go into details what happened, but I, I wouldn't have thought it was possible, but yeah, in Westport, it's possible. Okay, calls for service was thirty five, vehicles towed, two, investigations, three, uh, community programs, oh, okay, the Gator County, two, that's an assist. Okay, uh, what CPS?
Child protective services.
Child protective services, okay, one, uh, lockouts, one, handgun permits, three, and funerals, or, one. Uh, would there be any questions, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put Joe on the spot, is there any questions for Joe White's here? I guess not.
Great job, Joe.
Doing, doing a good job.
I had someone the other day tell me that, uh, okay, go ahead.
She's got one.
I about seen two little kids, kids, getting off the school bus. Um, I live on.
She lives. Yeah, she lives on the north side.
Yeah.
One, two, three houses down from me.
Yeah. The groundhouse anywhere. Yep, that's me. It's not just here, it's my, no, I mean, it's everywhere, it's right down Main Street, like, and it doesn't matter if there's a school bus out, if there's, it's all hours. But it's just, it's getting where you can tell it's spring, it's like.
Right. Make a circle in the, the town lot, go back to the, Paveys and make a circle, and go back to. Blue by, and, and it's getting to where people don't stop stop signs, and my husband, he, he's in bed most of the time, which is right there where he can hear everybody going down the street. And he said, that car didn't stop that stop sign, that car didn't stop, look at that, Joyce, that car did not, I said, what do you expect? It's west. Oh, yes, honey. That's why he doesn't drive. I can't believe you. I wish you would give him one.
Hey, there, there, there you go, you heard it.
But, but seriously, he doesn't get out to go to the post office, but I'm, I agree with him, he'll go right through that.
There you go, I guess you got permission to run Roy's ticket.
Give him, give him a warning. And you know what, I had to tell him just today that you cannot park there beside the pizza place. Well, why can't I, I've always parked here, and I said, look, what does that say down there on the street, no? I know it, but, but I guess when you're sick and you can't, you don't really pay attention. I'm not gonna take it away from you, that he can go a little bit. Do you think that'll stop him? No, I don't want him to throw me jail, for God's sake. He can't help it, okay, he's, he's really very sick.
All right, uh, oh, this is now open up to the public. Anything, anything else, please speak right now. Back behind, Scott, next, buddy.
William wants to say something.
I went up to area plan, we went and looked at the records all the way back to nineteen seventy two, seventy six, that is a street. Scott, can you help us? Right out here, we have a street, it's in between the post office.
And the pizza.
And the pizza place. That's been a street, according to the area planning commission, it's been a street since seventy two, seventy six, it's what their records show, like courthouse and dug them out. Area plan, also, we've had complaints before about people that there's not enough room to swing around at, at certain times, so it becomes a traffic hazard. I talked to the area plan, and they looked at the same GSI requirements and everything on that, and said, no, there is no parking there, you are right about that. So, we said that there was no. That's.
It's all correct.
Well, the, the, here, here's the thing, you're riding this, you're riding this, huh? Here, here's, here's the thing about this. The mail truck comes in, what time's the mail truck coming? Oh, the big mail truck swings by about twenty after five, something like that. And the thing is, well, we tried to work with you, and you're riding it for two parking spots, we put a sign up. No, by, by law, it has to be eight feet, you gotta have eight feet per parking spot. So, and we already measured this, and we've been through it, and not only that, we put a sign on the side over there that said, public parking this way.
First of all, I should move this business screen for fifteen years ago, I had people come all over this place, I'm talking about Greensburg, one of us, Dorper, I bring more people down than anything.
Well.
What if I packed up my business?
Well, well. Well, if, if.
I try to mind my own business, but we need that parking bed, and I appreciate everything that's down there, I'm not trying to be mean, I'm just saying.
Did you, did you talk to Barbo there and see, after her place goes, you can use her parking spots? See, that's, okay, that's what I'm saying, you've not tried alternative solutions. And the thing is, you're stuck on two parking spots over there, and that's not gonna happen.
I'll, I'll get surveyed, if you want to, if you guys want to work, then I'll get surveyed.
No, after, I, after. The thing, the thing is, you guys don't wanna work with us at all, we tried to work with you on it. You don't wanna work with us on it all, you're fixated on putting two parking spots in there, and.
And six parking spots.
Six.
Well, William, I, I think that, I think this could be worked out without anyone getting angry, and you have nothing to do with it, you don't have nothing. But anyway.
Roy, you and I have had a lot of discussion about this, over at your property even, and you kicked me off of your property.
Let's just calm down now, okay? But Will, I want to tell you something, honey. Not my tale talking to you, I'm talking to Will, okay? That parking lot that belongs just down across the street from you, we have given you permission to use that, we've given you permission to use this for parking too. I mean, I don't know what else we can do, that had, I had nothing to do with that, but if that's not big enough to have parking there, then it shouldn't be parking there. I, wait a minute, I'm not done. If you have the whole street most of the time, because you're open in the evening, and the whole street would be open for your parking, the one on that side, and even our parking lot right out here. I don't know what the, I don't know what everybody's getting angry about, I do know, because you're being ruffled up by somebody that's wanting you to be ruffled up. But Will, you are, you're one of the nicest people in the world, and to act like that, that's just not your nature. Exactly, we know what you have to do, and we know that you work mainly in the evenings, but I, I also understand the mail truck, there's nobody there when the mail truck comes. But if they're griping about it, we've got to, we've got to keep it open to everybody, just not one person. But I, I, I'm just, it's just not in your nature for me to hear you like this. Well, that's what, maybe, maybe you do need to get it surveyed. And we also gave you the alley on the other side.
You what?
We also gave you the alley on the other side, well, you need to stop and think about what you do for this town is wonderful. If you feel like you need to move, then, you know, we're not stopping you, but we don't want you to leave, but if you want to because of that, then that's just, that's crazy, but whatever.
Well, and I, I'll agree with.
He's speaking for everybody, I don't ever want you. You're speaking as the town. Nobody said he had, did I say for him to leave? Can't you leave if you wanted to, you know what, you know what I said, Will, you know what I'm saying. Anyone, it can go anywhere they want to, but I, I think that, uh, whatever, none of it. I, I think that I'm grateful for everything that this town does for me, and, and when somebody comes along and tries to get me stirred up, I'm not gonna listen to that. So.
And the thing is too, I'm trying to, been trying to encourage Mr. Hampton to sell his property, and also the whole, it's gonna go this way with his property, the whole backend's fallen in, the whole roof's fallen in. So, would, I've been trying to encourage him to sell that property and use that for parking as well, so if there's other things going on, Will, but the thing is, as it stands right now, unless legally, that I see otherwise, that there can't be parking in there because of the distances that are required in between the buildings, the park, and, and the, the safety issue, and, uh, the town is not gonna be liable for somebody that having, okay, would you be liable for it, for an accident in there?
I mean, I'm not stupid, I, I want, I wanna make sure I'm covered on things.
All right. But the, but the thing is, so.
Maybe I am liable, and I don't, that's not written in my business policy, or responsible for any parking up there.
Well, no, but the, the, the thing is, Will, it's a street, as it stands now, with the area planning commission, with the town of Westport, that, that area right in there, that will, where we have no parking, with a safety issue, and we're trying to look for alternative su- solutions. One of them is like, Damon got that sign and put up, and said there was municipal parking back here in the back, so this opens up this parking. Um, Barb, was he allowed to, after your business is closed, the customers, uh, in the pizza place parking, okay, so she. They do now. Okay, so see, that, that's opened up, we're talking to, uh, uh, Mr. Hampton, to try and get that. Encourage him one way or the other, either through condemnation or otherwise, to sell his property and probably turn that into a parking area, well, and I don't know with us trying to do all of that, I, I, I'm struggling with seeing the four, the parking issue, which is also a safety issue. I could walk with it if it had a wider distance in between the buildings, but not, yeah, yeah, I'd like to be close too sometimes, but it just don't work out that way. But as far as the town bending over to, to, to try to help you to do that, I can't see any more that we can do, and still maintain safety within that area in there, especially with that big mail truck that swings around, and people that wanna park in there on both sides, and, and I am not, don't want anybody hurt in there, and I don't want anybody walking across there to get hurt, and I don't wanna be responsible for an accident within that area. It opens up after you get past the buildings, and that's fine, but just not in that confined space in there, I just, I'm not wanna, unless I'm shown legally, or that, uh, our attorney gets a letter saying that we have to open that up and do that, I can't vote in favor of that, I really can't, not at this time. Well, anyway, that's two discussions, Keith. Oh, oh, water?
Water, yeah.
Did we ever contact, uh, uh, that one guy in the field over there to get a right of way? Over there before Keith said. Yeah.
No.
Okay.
I thought, did you have?
Move forward on it?
Yeah.
Do, do you have the guy's name and address and everything?
Oh, Steve.
All right, well, that's something we need to get. Uh, and I know that Keith, and this is gonna sound like an excuse, we have got between us water, this, 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 that, we gotta rank what we gotta do, and yeah.
You know why?
I think, I think, well.
Oh, we already had an engineering study, uh, with an engineering firm from Plumbus, and they gave us all that, and then I thought we had a map and everything.
Yeah, they, they designed a plan that, they didn't get rid of the water.
But the water is gonna have to drain on the, uh, farmer's field and go through that, and we're, we're gonna need some type of agreement with him, and, and talk to him about it before we can even move on then, because what, we didn't wanna get back into the situation we got back in with Commonwealth that, uh, didn't do due diligence, and they, uh, caused a problem with what they did, and we didn't wanna start the thing. But anyway, so we'll get, we'll get.
As far as.
If it doesn't do anything to your property or anything, I don't think we'd have to commit, yeah, it's all, right, it's all in the right way, so. Right. Right. Hopefully, one of these days we'll have the sewers fixed also. Jane, do you have anything? No?
Yes.
Kyle?
Barb, anything?
Stand up, Connie. Stand up and let's. Okay.
Yeah, we met with, um, the large grant chair, they wanted to know about just where the signs are, and what they look like, so we're on the last of that, I had come to, I had a call out to, see them on to the highway, state highway, and, and they were not answering my call, but I have lots of grants in here.
Okay. And for you that don't know what they're talking about, uh, Main Street, Westport, has gotten grants to put new signs on the edges of town, new Westport signs, um, really gonna be nice, uh, brick and brick signs, and they'll be really, really nice, so, thank you, girls. Where the, this ones are, it's already there. Sounds real nice, thank you, Connie, for letting us know about that, the design is really pretty.
And appreciate the work that you've done.
Absolutely. And I think Main Street had a very successful Easter hunt for the, the town this past Easter, and, and thank you for that also. Wow. How many bicycles? You give away a bunch of bicycles. Thank you, that's, that's awesome, you guys are doing a great job. Also, I wanna tell everybody that this coming Thursday, we were having two dumpsters here. Uh, I called him, and I, I'll have to call him back to be sure that he remembers, they're gonna have two dumpsters from Best Way Out here for people to put large trash in. No tires, no hazardous chemicals, anything else can go in these, and then on Saturday, we will have the electronic truck here, and that will be for small, well, it don't have to be small, because I have a dishwasher that goes in, anything electronic, dishwashers, TVs, anything will go into that truck. It'll be right here in our parking lot, the two dumpsters will be here on Thursday. And then on Saturday morning, just until eleven, we'll have the electronic pickup in the shredder, if anybody has anything that they need shredded that they don't want to, okay? No tires on either one, and you have to take the tires, and we have on the door out there, I think, where they take the tires, and it's up at the fairgrounds, so look on the door when you get ready to leave, and you'll see where you can take any old paint, toxic chemicals, stuff that you cannot throw in landfill, I, I worked real hard on getting this landfill through, through, so we gotta keep going with the right way to do it. Um, so we'll, uh, we'll, we'll take care of the trash from here, and whoever wants to throw it, you know, get those, get those sofas off the porch, and, and out of the backyard, and mattresses, and, you know, we'll do all of that, but a lot of it is up to the people, and I know that I'm not the only person that loves this town. So, anyway, we'll see you this, this week sometime, somebody. On Thursday. They'll be here, uh, yes, they'll be here at six o'clock in the morning, till probably, till they're full, which last time we did it, they were full, full.
Last time is full in four hours.
Yeah, so I, I suggest you come early. If you wanna get rid of it, but it's, it's a great way to get rid of it without having to pay to take it to the landfill.
Carrie, I have a couple last minute things, sorry. So, we have a call asking Frankie plumbing, because we, our bathrooms are out of order, they've been out of order for about a week, we had Frankie come and assess the situation, and there's apparently a broken pipe somewhere under the slab, so they're giving an estimate to replace twenty feet of four inch sewer line from edge of laptop that toward, or, sorry, that's wrong, um, demo concrete in the east bathroom, replace piping in the east bathroom, install new cleanout on that side of the building. The price includes concrete back in the floor with stone outside the building. The estimation is fifteen hundred to twenty-two hundred to do this, so I'm asking permission to do that though.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a fair, I know, you gotta have a bathroom, but that, too, is something that I wanna look, look at when we go to redo the community building, this building used to be an old ice house. It's shot, but we keep going, you know, as much as we can, but these bathrooms have never been right, have they? And so maybe we could put the town offices in the community building if we spend, you know, this is just something for me to throw out there that we can look at. And that would be awesome, too, to have a place where we could have the senior center in it, and where our town board could meet, and all kinds of stuff, I think it would be super. But it's something we can talk about.
Yeah, there's another idea, too.
Yeah, there's a lot of ideas. But I think that you should get this bathroom fixed for you guys for now, that's not gonna be done before then. Exactly.
Move these offices.
Right. Right, okay.
Okay, we, do I have a?
I have a motion that we go home. Uh, I'm sorry about your bathroom, honey, we have a motion to go ahead and fix the bathroom here, that, that's a reasonable amount.
I'll second that motion on favor.
Aye.
Okay, one other quick thing, um, let's see, Todd, someone from Johnson Wickham Insurance sent over our renewals for this year. Uh, we did a lot of work in trying to find some other options, unfortunately, the rates have went up, and the facility was coster, if you might help here, it did go up eight percent, and the, that's not bad.
Not bad, compared to.
But the biggest hit is for the employees that have any dependents, where they pay forty percent of the cost. So, um, Todd and I have talked, and he suggested I request from you guys that the council would approve that we pay thirty-five percent to the forty, which would help adjust some of that increase that the employees will pay, because any employee that has a spouse or child will have to pay a higher rate this year for their insurance, but if we could adjust, instead of paying forty percent, if we could get approved to pay thirty-five percent, that would kinda help even that back out, so we're not paying anymore.
So you mean, the people that are on the insurance would have to pay more per, out of their pocket, but where will go down?
No.
Say that again now.
So, any, where the eight percent really affects anybody is the employees that have dependents or spouses, I mean, we currently have a standard order. Um, I don't know, I don't know how long ago it was set up that way, I can't, I haven't had a chance to find it in the minutes, but at some point, the council decided that employees' insurance would be a hundred percent paid, but dependents and children, anything that was added, the town would only pay forty percent of, or they would pay sixty, and the employees paid forty percent.
I see.
So Todd suggested, so that the employees wouldn't be affected as bad this year, that the town permit the employees to pay thirty-five percent, so forty percent, that would, that makes it, um, where the town is paying basically sixty-five percent versus the sixty percent that we usually pay. For example, on my medical care, I pay for files insurance, and I will get an increase of twenty-three dollars a month on my insurance. So if you increase that percentage a little bit, I won't pay quite as much, so I won't get that hit as much as we would have otherwise.
And how many employees do we have that has, uh, dependents on, several?
Four.
Oh.
Four employees, so it's not a huge amount of money, as far as budget's concerned, um, it just definitely affects the employee.
Um, I made the motion that we accept that, Gloria, that's a good idea.
I second that on favor.
Aye.
I think with that, I have a motion closed, maybe.
Yes.
Late at last.
Do you hear it? I make a motion.